First on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from March 28th. We can extend a motion to approve those minutes. Okay, anything else on that? Any comments or questions on those minutes? Are there being none? I'd like to put that to vote. Mr. Switzek?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And then you also have in your packet April 4th. Can we pick it up? You want a second? Can we put that to vote? Mrs. Switzek?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you very much. Those are approved. Now, we will have our student council representatives. Nicole, thank you.
All right, so, of course, first on the agenda is sports. For girls track, they are 0-1. They had their first meet last week. And although they lost, they did very well. And their next meet is this Wednesday at Tantasca. And the boys track, they won their last meet. And the captains are Ethan Doyon, Nick Casier, Sean Nystrom, and Zach Lacer. And Ethan told me today that they are in the running to have an undefeated season. And they won, oh, I just said that. Again, they won their last meet against Exbridge and Milbury. And their next meet is also on Wednesday at Tantasca, against Tantasca. For baseball, the boys' baseball team is 2-0. And they have many games this week, as well as the girls, who are 1-1. They have four games this week. And the captains of the softball team are senior Johanna Burke and junior Nicole Mangatis. From NHS, they are preparing for the annual induction ceremony still. It's May 3rd at 6 o'clock. And the new prospective inductees will be reviewed this week by the NHS selection committee. And I think they'll be notified at the end of this week. Cultural enrichment, the cultural enrichment group is getting ready for their big trip overseas to Ireland. And they'll, I'm not sure on their exact date that they're leaving, but I think it's Friday. Yeah. From student council, on April 16th, we will be having an Easter egg event from 10 to 12. And the cost is $3. And this event includes an Easter egg hunt at 11:00 a.m., along with crafts, games, and fun, of course. And this Thursday is the leadership luncheon, which is where we bring all the leaders of the school, every captain of the team, every officer of the club, anything. And we meet in the community room and we have lunch together. So, that's exciting. And a big congratulations to the performing arts department for their production of Bye Bye Birdie, which they performed last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They've put in so much effort and so much work into putting on that production. And it was amazing, all three nights. And we had a big crowd come. And it was really a lot of fun. From Enduro TC, they are leading the march of the Little League parade. They are helping with the flower sale at the fire department for Easter. And they have received new uniforms. And their old uniforms are going to Commander Maisley's church, which in turn will then go to Haiti to make school uniforms. The New York City trip for seniors is this Friday. Everyone's excited for that. And it's a really important time for seniors. A lot of them are making their college decisions. And April vacation is next week. And that's all I have. I'll have more of the week after, because then it's a lot of stuff going on. But I wouldn't bombard you with that now.
Well, thank you very much, Nicole.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda, we're going to move our agenda around a little bit if we could. Under new business, we have a presentation by National Grid. It's an energy savings program. Mr. Helmerberg, you want to give an intro to that, if you could?
If I may, Mr. Spitz, I'll just pass it to Mr. Matthew, who has done all of the research on that.
Tonight, we have Sean McGloin, I hope I pronounced that correctly, from National Grid, and Eric Hanion from Energy Management Consultants. The committee may recall, a couple of years ago, the middle school went through a lighting retrofit. And even though the high school is still relatively new, being in the first decade or so, at the time it was built, I think it used probably the technology from the '90s. So, as a result, the high school can benefit, and as you'll see, benefit greatly, from going through the same sort of process. I'll turn over the details of the program and the specific changes to Sean and Eric. But most importantly, I think the committee should take away the fact that 40% of our KWH usage, our electricity usage at the high school, is from lighting. The changes recommended by Sean and Eric could reduce that by half. So, basically, 20% of our KWH billing from the high school could go away with these upgrades. I'll turn it over to Eric and Sean for a moment.
Yeah, hi. Thanks for having us here. My name is Sean McGloin, and I'm actually the energy efficiency consultant for National Grid for the Auburn, Oxford, Webster area. I also cover some towns out in the western part of the state as well. But basically, my area responsibility is for our electric incentive programs for our small and medium-sized customers, commercial, industrial, and municipalities are part of my customer base. I won't go into all the specific programs, but basically, we have a pretty broad spectrum of programs for our customers. We have residential incentive programs, and we have small commercial, large commercial. We have programs for new construction, and we have retrofit programs. So, we have a little bit out there for basically everybody. Some of the specific measures we have, such as lighting, chillers, rooftop units, pumps and motors, things like that. So, we can target specific measures like those. And we also have comprehensive programs, where we can look at, you know, the whole building, take a holistic approach. And one of those programs is a whole building assessment, which we're actually working with Richard to implement for the Oxford High School. So, we have a little bit, like I said, for everybody. If you want to remember one thing from tonight, in addition to Eric's lighting proposal, because everyone here is probably a National Grid electric customer, possibly even a gas customer, is if you go to masssave.com, that's kind of the clearinghouse website, where it's a statewide sponsored website, where you can obtain and ascertain all the information regarding our rebates incentives for any of the programs that I mentioned, whether it be residential or commercial. And in fact, if you're a utility customer anywhere in the state of Massachusetts, that's the website you can now go to, to access all the information. The other thing I wanted to touch on real quickly is the Green Communities Act. I don't know if anyone out here is familiar with that, but for utilities, what that did for us specifically is it dramatically increased the level of funding we have for our incentive programs. Basically, our level of funding has gone up about 400% since 2008. So, we have more monies available than ever before. Because of that, some of the specific programs have really been enhanced, particularly lighting. This year alone, the lighting incentives have gone up 50% compared to what they were in 2010. So, it's a good year to take advantage of those lighting incentives. The other thing the Green Communities Act did was, like I mentioned, it unified our programs under that Mass Save umbrella. So, National Grid actually has the same exact forms, programs, and incentives that NSTAR has out in the Boston area, or Unitel does up in the Pittsburgh area. So, all the utilities now have common forms and programs. So, it's definitely a benefit to our customers. The other thing that the act did is it's trying to integrate gas and electric measures. We're working on that with our gas counterparts in Oxford. It's simple, because we do both, electric and gas. But there are areas, like Worcester, for example, we're the electric company, but NSTAR is the gas company. And vice versa, in Boston, we're the gas company, and then NSTAR is the electric. But we're working together with our counterparts across the other utilities. The other thing we have is we have audits. We've always had lighting audits available for all of our customers. There's always been free audits on the small commercial side, and there's always been free lighting audits on the large commercial side through our project expediter program, which Eric is a part of. The other thing is, we have mechanical audits. Typically, with a mechanical audit, we do usually split that cost with the customer 50-50. Sometimes it can be a little expensive, and we want, basically, the customer to have a little skin in the game. We found that if they pay a little bit towards that audit, they're more likely to implement some of the measures recommended. But we're very flexible with the level of incentives and goals that we have. We're very flexible with that. In fact, with the whole building assessment, usually what we do with municipalities is if the customer agrees to implement one measure within 12 months of the audit, this is the mechanical side of the audit, we'll usually waive that 50-50 cost here. And we've actually agreed to do that for Richard for the Oxford High School. The last thing I wanted to mention real briefly before turning it over to Eric is our project expediter program. And what that is, is a turnkey program for lighting for our medium and large-sized customers. Why would you want to go with the PACS program? Well, basically, it's a turnkey program. Like I said, we'll send someone in at no cost, come in and do a free audit, a free proposal. And if you decide to implement those measures, they'll take care of everything. They'll buy all the material, they'll dispose of it properly, obtain all the certificates, they'll do all the labor. And most importantly, they will process your rebate application on your behalf, so that you can be assured that all the fixtures, lamps, and ballast that they're purchasing qualify for our incentives, and therefore, you're assured of getting the highest possible rebate that there is. So, that's kind of all I had to say for now. I guess I'll turn it over to Eric, unless anyone has any questions.
Go right ahead.
All right. Well, first, I'll talk about some of the products that we're going to be using here. I'll pass some around, just so you can get a feel for what we have going on here. This is an LED recessed pan. So, you have throughout the school, a lot of recessed pans that have two 23-watt compact fluorescents in them. We're going to be taking them out and putting in one of those 13-watt LEDs. You're going to drastically improve your lamp life, your light levels, and you're going to have a pretty cool little kit. Also, proposing to put in a lot of these two-by-four fixtures here. Everything you see above your head in the hallways, we'll be going from three lamps down to two lamps. And we'll have this zat look. Nice thing about this kit is that it just fits right into your existing housing. So, we'll gut the lamps' ballast and reflector, but we don't have to do anything with the actual fixture body. And we can put this up in its place. Helps reduce waste, helps reduce cost, a very cost-effective way to go about this. And also, we'll increase our light levels slightly and improve our light distribution. So, these lamps right here, got to project straight down. This fixture right here, called volumetric recessed fixture, will project our light out and down a lot more evenly and a lot more cost-effective there. So, we'll be doing that in the two-by-four and in the two-by-two, just brought the lens, obviously, you can see it in that, but it's also a kit in the two-by-two fixture. Your exit signs, most of them currently are two 20, or two 10-watt for 20-watt incandescent bulbs. We'll have them two watts in your exit signs, how we need. We can do green or red. I like the green. This guy chose the green. But we can go either way. But very cost-effective measure, again, it's running 24/7, goes from 20 watts down to two. Pretty significant savings there. A lot of your two-by-two fixtures that you have here have these two-bend lamps in them. Talk to your maintenance person, these are kind of a nightmare. They're very expensive, they burn out quickly. So, in that two-by-two fixture that I'm proposing, we'll be going from this two-bend to straight lamps. Third of the cost, works out really well, save light levels as your existing fixtures. Currently, you have 32-watt lamps in all your fixtures. I'm proposing to go down to 25-watt lamps. Your 32-watt lamps are rated for 30,000-hour lamp life. Your 25-watt lamps will be rated for 40,000-hour lamp life. So, not only will you be reducing your consumption, but you'll also be gaining maintenance savings as well.
Could you just repeat what you just said on the lighting?
Say that one more time.
Sure.
32 watts to 25.
32 watts to 25 watts. 32 watts is rated for 30,000-hour lamp life. The 25 watts is rated for 40,000-hour lamp life.
You should point out that you're going from three lamps to two.
Right.
Goes from three lamps to two. To two lamps, correct. There's two in there. And with those CFLs, we were replacing with the LED, they're rated for 10,000 hours. The LED is rated for 60,000 hours. So, tremendous savings there as well.
Just if I might, where are those cans? Like, where would they, where are they?
You have them, some in the halls, some in the bathrooms.
Stairways.
What's that?
Stairways.
Stairways.
All right.
You have quite a few throughout.
Do you know how many we have?
I can tell you, yes. Hold on one second.
Are these fixtures, these black walls, are they retrofitted? So, if they will, you don't have a lot of ceiling reconstruction or panel reconstruction?
Exactly. You won't have any.
That's what these are now?
Correct. Yeah, that's the great thing. These kits have come out in the last two years. We always used to have to go to new fixtures, where we would have to rehang everything. You get into a lot of material and labor costs in doing that. These are a very cost-effective way to do it, and helps eliminate waste as well. So, we have 84 of those recessed cans. Of those two-by-two kits that I'm talking about, there's 215 of those. We have close to 1,000 of the two-by-four kits.
All told, Eric's proposal indicates about over 1,600 different fixtures that will be touched by this project.
Correct. There'll be 1,629 fixtures, to be exact. And we will also be, as you folks are, I'm sure, aware, you do have motion sensors.
Can you take them out?
The majority can't take them.
There are people that sit at this, excuse me, are always waving behind you when those lights go off. Now, I don't see why there's a reason for that.
Unfortunately, the ones that are put in here are older technology. And there's no incentive to take them out, and no financial incentive nor energy savings. So, from an energy conservation perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense. From a practical perspective, I've noticed in sitting here, I would love to not have the lights going on and off behind me. However, that is.
We may be able to buy the sensor, and maybe while they're here, maybe they could retrofit into our, change out our existing ones.
Yeah, we can certainly change them out.
Yeah, you can still do them, you just can't get an incentive from the utility, because we're only paying for energy savings.
Getting on and off of fluorescent bulbs, or these type of bulbs are made to stay hot versus an incandescent, it's cheaper to turn an incandescent on and off and let it burn all day. But these things just drive the snutch in this room, forget about other rooms.
Sure. I mean, the way this is set up is, as you folks are well aware, is not very good. What we are proposing is to put in a few more sensors, but we're putting them as corner-mounted sensors instead of in the middle of the room, and they see the entire room. So, if there's any motion in the entire room, they will pick it up. So, you're not going to have them going on and off the way we do now.
They can't be overridden for like a meeting for here, where we're here for three hours.
They can.
They tend to be.
There's adjustments on all the sensors. You can adjust how long you want them to go on and off for, and you can override them altogether. Naturally, that's slightly counterintuitive, but you can do that as well for some room like this. Definitely not do that again. You can adjust the timing on all of them. So, we're proposing to put in about 50 more sensors that will work better than these doing.
Can we get that fixed from Mrs. Switz's last meeting, so she doesn't have to deal with that?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we can promise that, but when PAC comes to the next meeting in the fall, absolutely.
Yeah.
Go right ahead, I'm sorry.
And just to speak to your point of the lamp life being adversely affected, you know, versus the energy savings, you naturally don't want these lamps going on and off all the time. It's not good for them. But if you set your sensor to 20 minutes, something like that, and all the kids and all the teachers are out of the classroom, the teacher forgets to turn off the lights, and there's nobody coming in for the next couple hours, it's very cost-effective to have those fixtures shut down.
I don't know if I see that in the world.
Yeah, it is.
Watch the thing go on and off during the evening.
Are there any other questions on the technology itself before we start to get into some of the KWH savings?
Maybe you should just mention the gym lights that were a big concern.
Sure, yeah. The gym lights, right now, you have, there's 63 of them in there in total. And they are, each fixture has eight 42-watt compact fluorescents in them, again, rated for 10,000 hours of lamp life. As Richard is aware, they burn out all the time. Amazing nightmare. So, you folks, right now, I'm proposing to put in fixtures that have various fluorescents in them, again, rated for 40,000-hour lamp life, using half the energy of the fixtures that you have in there, and drastically improving your light levels. That technology that you have in there, as Richard mentioned, was put in in either 2000 or 2001, but really wasn't up to date even then. So, that's a big thing for you folks.
It was top of the line in the early and mid-'90s, but by 2001, it was kind of middle of the road.
So, what was installed in your brand-new building was already obsolete, is what you thought?
I wouldn't say it was obsolete. It was middle of the road. I mean, they were better. It wasn't the worst.
You need to share.
And a lot of times, architects don't design for energy efficiency perspectives. You'd like to think they would, but then I might be unemployed. So, at the same time, it's not easy.
And on the gym, I think most importantly is, currently, we don't have motion sensors there to shut the lights off when they're not in use. But you're proposing on putting motion sensors in.
We're putting motion sensors on the individual fixtures themselves, so that if people are playing basketball in half the gym, the other half of the gym can be off. Again, we'll set them for, say, 30 minutes or something like that. So, it's not like you're playing a basketball game, the kid runs down one end, of course, you basket, and then the other end, the lights are off. So, they will stay on while the gym is in use. But when it's not fully in use, it's crazy to have that place lit up the way it is right now. So, we will help solve that problem as well. It's going to be individual, called fixture mounted sensors.
Okay?
One more question.
I'll go right ahead.
You said the gym. Now, I'm just, my mind is walking. Is there anything in our theater or in the auditorium that we fired? I mean, there's a lot of light stuff going on there. Is that all set? That's theater lighting? Or is that anything that you went through?
Yeah, I can speak to that a lot. The theater, so the higher stage of the theater, you have some what are called industrial fixtures. They have the reflector behind them. They're very high up. We're going to replace those. But a lot of your actual theater lighting itself is very specific to the theater. So, we don't want to start playing around with that from an energy conservation perspective. It also has a special dimming system to it, where a lot of energy-efficient lamps don't adhere well to that system. So, for the most part, your theater, while it is inefficient, will remain that way because of the nature of what you do.
Is the auditorium with seating is also considered theater lighting? Do all of that is?
Yeah, it's all on that thing.
Yep.
Theater lighting.
Yep, okay.
That really, there's not really a solution for. We've done a lot of work with schools, and we've tried to implement conservation measures in there. And 90% of the time, we have to change it back out because it doesn't work for the theater school. So, that's one area that we tend to let do, staying the way it is and not, not adhere to that.
What about locker rooms?
Locker rooms, we'll be changing out.
There's a lot of weight there after, not even after a game, but after a possession in the Yolke, we'll stay on forever until the owners will come and shut them off.
Correct. Proposing sensors in there, and go, and we'll be going for it as well. Those are great stations to tackle. Really, the theater is the only thing in the entire school that is not being changed out. Any other questions on the technology itself? No patience?
Go for it.
All right. So, I think in front of you, you folks have the environmental impact sheet, which I'd like to touch upon briefly. It shows the 292,583 kilowatt-hours saved by this project. And as Richard mentioned, you'll be reducing your consumption by half. We put that into a quantifiable environmental impact. You can read it in front of you. It shows you how many tons of carbon dioxide saved, pounds of sulfur dioxide, pounds of nitrogen oxide, pounds of visible particulate, and how many fewer gallons of oil need to be imported. Naturally, when we're doing this install, when we do it in the summer and the kids come back, a lot of times, they notice what's going on. It's great to use this as an educational tool, to put up around the facility, to show the kids that you're being proactive, why you did this, I mean, other than the bottom line. And to kind of use that, we encourage teachers to use that in the academic setting as well. And oftentimes, teachers have incorporated it into their curriculum, not as a large part, obviously, but just as some, a talking point, to make the kids aware of what's going on in the school and how that affects the environment around them. We find it to be a pretty effective educational tool. So, I wanted to point that out. There are any, that 292,583 KWH, if you went through my whole survey, I know you don't have it in front of you, Richard has gone through it. It shows you exactly your existing watts, your proposed watts, the difference between the two, how often you use it. You multiply all that out, and that's how you get to that 292,583. It's very scientific. There's no guesswork to it. So, are there any questions on that?
I just wanted to mention real quickly, as part of our whole building assessment, there is a whole education campaign that National Grid will work with Richard and your school. It'll be designed and implemented. That comes a little bit later, but that is something that goes with that whole building assessment.
Great. Mr. Peterson? Were the warranties through you, National Grid, or through the fixture companies?
They are through the fixture companies. Do you have the warranty information there in front of you?
So, I would.
Yes. So, what we will do, we'll give you a customer book that will have all of that information in it. And if anything burns out in that timeframe, all you have to do is fill out that little bit of information, send it to Osram Sylvania. They will send you the new lamps, new ballast, new fixtures, whatever it may be, at no charge. If you're ever having any trouble with that process, we can certainly help you out with it. But it's a very easy process, and we'll give you all the documentation for it.
They've been around long enough, five years from now, they're going to have to worry like the roofing guys when they disappear.
No, these companies have been around. I mean, Osram Sylvania has been around for 50 years.
They're part of Siemens, which is a huge multinational conglomerate.
Yeah.
So, they're not going anywhere.
They're not going anywhere. That's, I can guarantee you that. If they do, we're all in trouble.
We have had some other warranty problems with the manufacturers that disappeared or the contractors that disappeared.
Sure.
I don't want that to continue to happen.
Yeah, understandable. And to speak to the contractor part of it, we've been in business since '93. We've been project expediters with National Grid since 2001. We have to go through a bid process every year to maintain that status. We have to have good relationships with all of our projects in order to maintain that status. So, I don't think you're going to have any concerns there as far as the contractor nor the manufacturers with the warranty information.
Mrs. Ennis?
Who have you worked with locally?
Um, who have we worked with locally? Done some projects for Denholm over in Worcester. We've done a lot of work for Gloucester Public Schools, done a lot of work for Andover Public Schools.
This type of a project?
Exactly.
Anybody, anyone in our neighborhood?
We actually just did a lighting, it's on a smaller scale, but we did a lighting project for JS Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just did that, I think, last fall.
Okay.
Mrs. Switzek?
How long from stat to finish, you coming in and then you leaving? What timeframe are we talking about?
About 10 weeks. Obviously, it depends on the size of the crew and our hours of operation that we can get in here. But you're going to be looking in that eight-to-10-week range to do this project.
If I may, the plan would be to start the project as soon as school let out this year. And even before that, Eric and I had spoken about maybe converting one classroom, so that teachers could see that, see what it looked like, and alleviate any fears that they may have that they're coming back to a classroom that's too dark or anything along those lines, you know, so that they could have a visual before they leave for the school year.
That's a good idea. Go right ahead, Mrs. Ennis?
Well, let's get to the kicker.
Okay.
Because that's, you know, I think you understand, and I'm sure you hear the news and everything, and we are public schools throughout the country, are in a budget crunch right now.
Sure.
This, of course, is a significant change to this building. It's a significant dollar amount, it's going to be, I'm sure, but I'm sure that you're It's going to be, I'm sure, but I'm sure that you're going to explain the savings and all of that. So, you know, apples and oranges, it's going to be a huge, huge decision, I think, for this board to make, so.
Actually, if I might, the overall cost for the interior that we're looking at, not including the exterior lights, the interior only, is 203,000. NGrid's incentives will cover about 37% of that, or about 77,000. The remaining 126,000 would need to be paid for. But NGrid has found money in their corporate accounts or corporate...
This year is coming from our energy efficiency funds.
Okay. To be able to allow us to finance it on our bill for 24 months at a 0% interest rate. So the same programs as were available at the middle school back in 2006, except the split is a little bit different.
But that didn't cost the town anything to speak of.
Right, and this won't cost anything out of pocket either.
Okay, so it's not really something we have to worry about the town. I think it's...
Well, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, there's no upfront cost. Everything can be financed. It will come on our bill. And the way that the savings will balance off the increased expenses, we'd be looking at around 1,000 to 1,500, depending on the actual level of savings, additional per month here at the high school. But it's my firm belief that if there's an educational campaign that can be had, we can probably recoup even that 1,000 to 1,500, either from this school or other schools as they jump on, learn about, oh yes, shutting off a light does matter. All of those energy conservation steps that if there's an educational program that we can piggyback onto, I think is a real opportunity.
What about our other buildings?
The other buildings are eligible. The high school is a separate type of account from the other schools. Can you give me the exact...
Yeah, the threshold between our small business program and our large business program is 300 KW. That's what the average demand is. I shouldn't say the average demand, that's the threshold. So the Oxford High School is slightly over 300 KW. So they fall under that large business program. Whereas if you have any town accounts that are 300 KW and less, they qualify for that small business or direct install, as we call on it now. That's a different level of incentives. It's a much better, it's a much higher level. It's a 70-30 split. And there's always financing on that share as well.
And the reason we chose to look at the high school first is because this is our biggest, largest opportunity for savings. Specifically, the gymnasium, I knew was a place that we, unfortunately, due to the nature of the beast, spend more money than we need to right now. And if there's a way of cutting that back and getting payback to pay for the project in two and a half years, and that's what this really works out to be, I think it's a winner. I know that Mr. Donay's, the facilities manager for the town and school, is absolutely 130% behind this program because it'll save him a lot of man-hours.
Mr. Peterson?
I don't think it'll take too much to educate the staff because you've already done some of that. And even with these lights, you've gone around and made sure that they understand the value of turning them off. And I know you've done that yourself. So I don't think that's going to be the problem. They'll use this properly.
Mrs. Ennis?
Just one more. Did you solicit us or did we solicit you?
Well, I guess I started soliciting Richard end of last year. And I think when he started seeing some of the monthly bills, he said, "I need to talk to Sean." So a little bit of both.
Mrs. Twitzy?
Thank you, really for both of you, and also to Richard and Alan. Is this very similar to what we did at the middle school, almost?
Well, it's relamping.
Right, is exactly where we had no costs. It has shown that we reduced our costs, actually, right? We started making that savings, what, a year or two after we did it? So that's the same type of situation. So we've already done this type. This isn't a brand-new situation for us. Is that correct? So, I mean, it's not like we're on the nice here. We've done this before, and we've made up very well on it.
Well, that's why I brought the middle school up because that really was an effective program. It really cost us nothing in retrospect to what it's saving us now. So this is the same type of program.
You're looking at a savings of about $44,000 a year with this project.
It's pretty expensive.
Forty-four thousand?
Forty-four thousand dollars a year. Big, big number. Without any upfront cost. That's, you know, something that Sean was able to get for this.
You're jumping on his motion. We're going for this.
I'll hold this room up, Richard, pursue it and get it done.
Okay, so we have a second on that? Can we put that to vote, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Twitzy, Mrs. Cornyn, Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, I also vote yes. We look forward to having new lighting in our school.
Thank you. If I can, just before you leave. Would you be able to do a classroom before school gets out? I mean, we're talking a few weeks, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Six weeks. I mean, would you be able to do that?
Yes.
Pick a room and then let the teachers have use and...
Yes.
Kids that are coming back next year, you know? Take a look, let us take a look at it.
Yes.
And see, okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I just, that would be very beneficial to see because I work in a building right now that's been running at Neil Coman and only down from Worcester. And it makes a difference even in five years' time from what they put in there compared to what we have here right now. And I think if everybody sees it, it's a no-brainer once it's installed.
Right, I think it's a no-brainer anyways.
They would be happy to do that.
Great, that'd be great.
Something we'll get started on right away, get started on the incentive application process because that takes some time, get those funds reserved, and get the classroom turned over.
So we're looking at possible start of this summer?
Yes, we would look. I don't know exactly when you get out of school, but...
We'll talk about the timelines, but June 21st, somebody will be here working.
Okay. Great, terrific, thank you very much.
Enjoy. It's getting hot here in the summer.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Use that money. And fix that light going on now. It's awful.
Is this the first room you do after a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have a deal for you?
Yeah, no kidding.
All right, all right, guys. All right, Mr. Peterson, settle it down, settle it down. So I'm going to go for the gavel.
She's waiting.
All right, we good? All righty. Next on the agenda, unfinished business we have down here. Continued discussion of FY12 budget. Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
I don't know, I kind of like that lighting. Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Just to recap, at our meeting last Monday, the committee voted a budget forward of 14 million, 921. And I was at the Board of Selectmen's meeting the following evening to ostensibly discuss the middle school project. But it evolved into a discussion of the school department budget. And we have had continuing talks with the town's financial team, town manager, as well as the financial director. And while there appears that there will be or could be some more room, it still is tied into a further topic, which is the health insurance. And also, our ability to see if we can budgetarily convince the town's financial team that there is some extra dollars based upon our potential usage of health insurance. So there is an awful lot of movement over the next two weeks. I can let Mr. Matthews speak to Beacon Hill, but as Mr. Peterson certainly knows, we're supposed to be getting a local aid resolution, which is supposed to give the cities and towns a much closer view as to where they're going to be. And that is still forthcoming. So I think that there is still going to be movement over the next two weeks. And then certainly, as we discuss the public hearing, we'll have a closer idea of where we are to be. And then certainly, we would then have to go, based upon what the final number will be at town meeting, and adjust to meet that final number. And as I say, I think it is still very flexible and very fluid. I don't know, if you wanted to speak to that local aid.
Other than awaiting a joint resolution from the Senate and House, our local aid number, not so much our Chapter 70 number, but the UGG, the unrestricted general government number, is still in flux. And as a result, you know, it's difficult to forecast where it's going when you hear a lot of different scenarios played out. So if it indeed comes down to a 10% cut from last year's number, not so bad. If it's a 10% reduction on top of Governor Patrick, a 9% reduction to Oxford, then that's pretty significant.
And just to elaborate on the health insurance, everyone got a copy of what came out today, which is the proposed healthcare coverage changes for the town. And the IAC gave their approval, then the Board of Selectmen did last Tuesday. So there will be a meeting of all of the town and school union presidents on Friday. And Town Council, as well as Ken Lombardi from EBS Boran, will be there to review the proposed changes and their impact. And that meeting is this Friday, the 15th. We have open enrollment that begins on May 1st, and payroll deductions from that begin on July 1st. So the timing is quick. However, if this goes through in its entirety the way it has been spelled out to us, there would be a shifting of health insurance costs that are charged to the schools from the indirect costs over to the operating budget. And we will see how much that dollar amount will be. We'll know much better on Friday. Obviously, there's a very short window here if there are concerns as the unions take this up. And I believe five of the six unions, all of the school unions, did approve this already at the IAC meeting. And so it will be, hopefully, an important part of where we arrive at our budget number over the next two weeks.
Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Twitzy?
I appreciate, I have just a couple of questions. When I was thinking that we were talking about the budget still. And Mr. Matthew, remember, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, I talked about the format, how you look at this. And there are some lines, like you took the FY11, exactly what we passed. And then I said, "Well, could we get something that shows FY11, like with all those changes we've made?" And just for an instance, when I look at this, just to show you where my mind is going, like, looking at FY11, I know, like, the playground aids are gone, but we know they're there. But FY11 says there's no money attributed to that column. Can we see things that, I know you've adjusted over the years, so that we can actually see the last year's? So we see that, you know, the level of service, the level of funding, we want to see those lines? Because I know there's certain lines that have changed, but I can't tell what they are.
I can certainly work on that. It will, and maybe what I should do is prepare what the budget would look like assuming that the Ed Jobs Bill warrant article passes because that's when those gaps would get filled in. So maybe I have to work on that assumption. The town meeting warrant article to transfer money from the health insurance to our operating budget. Because that was a grant that was helped, that was utilized to help offset some of these expenditures.
That's not really what she's asking, I don't think. You're just asking, we made a lot of moves on the budget this year. Okay, you actually still do have playground aids. But they're not under the lines that we can see that. And so when we're actually looking at the budget, I think...
So it looks like I've just created that job.
Right, which we haven't.
And that's what I'm looking to, right, so that isn't something, I know we must have line-shifted that to fill those positions in funnel. I think we did that with the transfer, hopefully, or, you know, on that. But it looks like FY11, I'm just using it, I just happened to open that up. That's one where there's zero, there's nothing. And now when I look at a budget, FY11, I'm just thinking, when we do present this to people, they're going to say, "You're adding positions." And we're not, but because we've transferred the money. So I'm thinking, what way can we present this to show that we have transferred that from some other account so that makes that line item less?
I could start working on that based on our previous discussions. So let me duck that off and finish that up.
I just think that's an easier thing to present to people because there are so many lines here that... I know what you're saying, you took FY11 for what we passed on July 1st. But we've made so many changes, and some line items is zero. And all of a sudden, now there's a source, there's some money, and it looks like we're creating something. So I was wondering if we could do that.
Okay, you have another one? You said you had a couple.
I know, I'm just trying to think of my other one.
Go right ahead.
I just happened to look down, and I just happened to open my book to one school, so that's why I'm just looking at these. Another item that, I was wondering if, in doing this, when we're creating this, you know, to make it really very clear-cut for people, especially when we have our open meeting, our public meeting, rather, the FY11, again, it could be because it's transferred, and I know this happens to be, I just happened to open Chaffey School, but I know Claretmont and Chaffey, we had that cross and all of that. Is there some way, I'm assuming that you must have transferred that or done something, or how to balance it? Because when you're looking at some of these lines, especially when I'm looking at, like, the professional staff, the teachers, it says 16%. I mean, everybody knows the town, it's a 2.5% raise. So I need to see 2.5% because I need to know that that's exactly 2.5% that we went over there. So if there's a number change, that we can make sure that we have cut every, you know, dollar. I want that to be very clear to people. I want someone to say that there's a 16% raise, because someone's going to say that. And I know that's not, but it's just the way those numbers fall over the year.
Part of the difficulty, unfortunately, and to my earlier point, is the fact that we're relying on grants to help fund our operating budget. And that was purposely done by the state through the SFSF grant and then with the federal Ed Jobs Bill grant. So as a result, not every dollar that we need and every dollar that's represented in our FY12 request is not necessarily present in our FY11 budget. That was why I said earlier, I'll rework the budget, including the Ed Jobs numbers. And so to your point, that's absolutely true in terms of the way that the Chaffey School and the Barton School look. The only time that that's seen is when it's broken out this way, when I give you your monthly report because everything is in the function code. Everything is okay. So let me think about how to include both pieces of information to make it, and I think we've even mentioned it before, that even the state is having difficulty presenting year-to-year information based on the fact that a lot of these grants were not included in the net school spending calculations, et cetera, et cetera. So let me dust off the work that I'd done before, and let me come up with a creative way of displaying the information so that it's clear-cut to people.
That's what I want, because, I mean, we even had trouble fishing through this. I think we said that before.
We did.
But to present it and to let people understand what we are fighting or what we see as really level service, it's like a book, I'm reading this and I'm not seeing it, but yet I know the bottom-line number says that, but in-between it looks really kind of patchy. So we just hope we could do that, maybe. I think it'd just be easier for people to understand who we are.
Okay, you good with that? Okay, any other questions on that? Everybody good? Very good. So let's move on to the discussion of the OMS building project. Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. We did have a small turnout on Saturday for the open house. I thank you for coming. And I just wanted to know, I redid the sheet from last week because now that, as of Tuesday, the Board of Selectmen voted this as a warrant article and then also voted the ballot question. Election law prohibits me from commenting on anything but fact and the assumptions. So as you can see here, we know that this is set, that the reimbursement rate or the grant funding is at 57.74% of the total. We do know that the total estimated cost is 5.8 million, which breaks down into 3.3 million dollars that the state will pay and 2.4 million dollars, which would be the town's share. We also know that the current utility costs are approximately 150,000, and the energy savings would be somewhere in the vicinity of 10 to 20, but we were conservative and said 10 to 15%. We also do know that the cost of the project is estimated at $20 per 100,000 evaluation per year. So on a property that is valued at 250,000, the cost of this project would be approximately $50 a year. And we do know that the boiler project that was completed in 2007, 2008 is eligible to be included as part of the reimbursement here. So that is $190,000 of extra funding that we would get. And so we thank the Board of Selectmen for seeing the wisdom of putting this on the warrant as an article to vote for the project. And we also have the ballot question in place if, in fact, the warrant article passes. And that's all I have on the middle school building project.
I had a question for you. Have we figured out, what is the actual life of the middle school if this isn't done? If this work isn't completed? I mean, I'm thinking that it won't go another 10 years. Am I correct in that assumption?
It's a difficult timeframe to pin down, but talking to RDK engineers, as well as to Mr. Donay, who is a mechanical engineer and has a lot of knowledge on the building itself, it's an accurate statement to say that the building systems will start to fail at a more rapid rate and be more costly to maintain. Certainly, some of the handicaps that we are facing are that the companies that made the original equipment on the univentilator... on the unit ventilators and some of the piping and distribution materials are out of business. And so the only way that we can keep them going is to try and fabricate the pieces that we need piecemeal as they fail. So I think that, obviously, that is the reason why Massachusetts School Building Authority put us on the list and wants us to consider this because it would extend the life of a building in a very inexpensive manner compared with the cost of building a new one at some point down the road.
And that was going to be part of my point. You know, if the building lasts for another ten years, say, okay, and we get the maximum we could possibly get out of this building. Number one, I'm sure the state reimbursement will not be at the level that it is now. Each year is going to gradually decrease. I mean, there's absolutely no question in my mind that that is going to be the case with state funding. That same building that we're talking about now making use for for another twenty-five years through these renovations, to replace that building in ten years is going to cost us sixty million dollars, probably. And that's probably a low estimate as to what a new middle school would cost this town should we not do these renovations. And I don't think people quite get this. I mean, I hear talk constantly about this being not a good time to do this work and not a time that we should be invested in this type of renovation. Well, you know what? It is. Whether they like it or not, whether the town likes it or not, it's time, it's due. We've put this off long enough. I mean, you can only allow these renovation projects to go for so long. I mean, we have really pushed this and pushed this and pushed this. We're not going to have a middle school pretty soon. I mean, that's what's going to end up happening to this town. And as much as we don't want to hear it, and as much as it's not the popular thing to say, this project needs to happen, and the town needs to understand that. And at a cost of two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, we're getting out of it pretty cheap, in my opinion, for what's going to be done to that school. And it's going to make it usable for another twenty-five years. I don't see how that's a poor investment. And you know, and granted, I understand that when we take this money, that the state gets to say how we spend it on this building. And you know, that's been called big brother government, okay, that I've heard referred to. That's not the case. The state has the right to tell us what we need to meet today's educational needs. And I have no problem with that. We really need to do this project. I can't be more passionate about it. I don't have kids in the schools. You know, it's going to benefit some of you, but it's not going to benefit me and my family. But this is my town, okay? And I'm very proud of Oxford and what it was education only fifteen, twenty years ago. For us to allow one of our buildings, and the bones of that building, I'm told, are in excellent shape, that it can withstand this remodel and it will be almost like new, having a new building, which is, for two million dollars, it's just unheard of. So I, you know, I've really been hearing this going on and on and on, and we've been discussing this, the town's been discussing it, saying that it's not the right time. Well, it's not going to ever be the right time. And then we're going to lose out as a town on this building, which is well worth saving. And I just, I can't believe we're getting this much fight on a project that is so needed and so wanted in this town by people that have kids in school. I mean, I just, I'm a little disappointed at the reaction that this has gotten really in town. Mr. Peterson?
You know, you've pretty much said a lot of what I was going to say, and I agree with you, Mr. Spitz. And I tried to say some of that Tuesday night, but Mr. Himmelberger didn't. Fine job presenting the project and the program. It's not the building. That building will stand probably another hundred years, except for the chimney and a few things that have had some mortar cracks and things that can be refilled. We circumvented the chimney there by putting up steel chimney and things at a cheaper cost for fuel efficiency and anything else with the new boiler. The boilers and things that we've been doing. We're continuing to maintain that building. I don't want people to misconstrue that. I've sat here long enough between finance and school committee. One of the first questions I asked on the finance board and then at a town meeting, we had the roof repaired on that building. How long is it going to last? Where's the, I asked the light company tonight, because the manufacturers, the roof is still going to be around? We've done that four times in the twenty years I've been on any of the town boards, twenty-one years at this point plus. All we've done on the roof is shift our problem from one corner to the other. That whole roof emphatically needs to be done right now. But some of the other projects will keep that building. And, you know, Mr. Bigwood, God rest his soul, had said Harvard's buildings are a hundred-plus years old. Well, that's true. That building will stand to two hundred years old, but not without the proper repairs and renovations that are absolutely needed now. And it isn't a matter of just straight maintenance. It's like Mr. Himmelberger said, these companies are all out of business. We can't get parts. They've been able to get parts from some schools that are updating their equipment, so we can use some of their old parts, but those days are gone. There's nobody left. And at least the state finally, if you want to call it big brother, whatever, in their infinite wisdom, finally found out we don't need the halls build new buildings. And now the renovation project, yes, we're not going to get the eighty percent we got for the high school, but that's dropped from sixty-seven to fifty-seven right now. So the longer we go, we don't know how much, or if it's going to be even a forty, thirty split or something later on, all right? So I, I'm not one, I think everyone in the community knows I'm not one to spend money, but this project has to be done. This is the last of the fleet. All the other town buildings, the fire stations, town hall, everything's been renovated. This building has to be done finally.
Mrs. Dewitzick, you have a point?
I do, I just have a quick point because we're talking about, you know, the share and how much money it is. And I note to the townspeople, you know, a two-plus million bill is like, oh, my gosh. But I think you have to remember, to your point, Ms. Peterson, that you need a new roof. It's not going to matter. You have to put a new roof, and it's one point one million, I believe it was, for the new roof. So don't think you're getting away from it. Half of the two million I spent is on a new roof. Now, if you watch the video and you watch Mr. Donay's with the distribution center, I mean, God love him, they're retrofitting everything, but they've got the duct tape out, folks. Okay, so that's going to go. And I don't know how much that was, the distribution alone. I wish I had my notes in front of me. But those two things alone, which will go, I mean, I'm not a betting woman, but I'm going to say in a couple of years, three years, it's coming, whether you like it or not. I'd rather know that I did that and I get all of the rest. You have to look at the sale price there, folks. I mean, it's just like shopping, you go with your coupons, you do everything. And I too think that, I wouldn't sit here and tell you, I take taxes too, and in a couple of years, I'm not going to have children here. But I got to make sure that building stands up. And it's the biggest building for our kids, it's five through eight, that's where most of our kids are. If that goes down, if the snow decides to shut that roof down, I have no idea where we'll put those children for that time there. So it has to be done. So if we're going to invest two million, I may as well get everything thrown in with it. And if the state says they're going to pay almost sixty percent, I think they have a right to say, we want you to do it all right because we don't want you coming back again. And just for people to know, you know, I don't think we're asking people, you know, something ridiculous. We seriously believe in this. And I seriously believe that the town has to look at these schools because, yes, I'm a taxpayer, yes, I own property, but I want the value of my property to stay high. If this school system and the buildings look like crap, no one's coming into this town. And the investment, my parents' investment on their home, they're not going to be able to sell their home. So I'm not telling you to invest billions of dollars you're not going to get return on. This all goes to the value of your home. And with good schools, people coming into town, four-bedroom, three-bedroom houses, mom and, you know, grandma and grandpa aren't buying those. I keep saying that to people. It's the young people coming in with their families. And the first thing they want to know is what's your system look like? If I'm taking duct tape to put on a radiator, I'm not buying a house in that place. I mean, I have to show that I care and I have pride in my schools and in my town. And that's where your children are educated. And I really think, you got to think that, between the new roof that is coming and the distribution, which it shows in the video, Mr. Donay brings it right in there, that's going to be close to two million right there. So either way, we're going to pay two million. We're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. And I think that's what we're trying to tell people. So hopefully, they do understand that.
Great, Mr. Himmelberger?
And just to your point, Mr. Spitz, the two big items here are the fact that SBA has told us we're not going to be allowed to stay on the list forever. They put us on the list in the fall of two thousand and seven. And they've been patient with us. And to their point, when I made the inquiries last fall, they said, you really need to do this, this, and this. We can't guarantee that you're going to be allowed to stay on the list. The other piece of it is, they've included that reimbursement on the boiler project, which was originally done as part of the total renovation. So that almost two hundred thousand actually brings the cost down out of pocket. So all good points.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Moving on, why don't we hear from our superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. I only have a couple of quick items. One is that this coming Wednesday at six-thirty, we are on the finance committee's agenda. And that will be held at town hall. And all of us are cordially invited. And the other thing I have is that I have Mr. Yvonne's contract. His contract runs out June thirtieth. And Dr. LaPorte drafted a new contract, and I wanted to submit that for the committee's approval. And I think Mr. Yvonne has done an outstanding job for this town over the past six years. And that's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Matthew?
I have nothing, Mrs. Yvonne.
All right, Mrs. Dewitzick?
I have nothing.
Mrs. Conan?
Could I just ask that we get the senior calendar for the events so we can put them all on our calendar? It's going to be coming fast and furious.
Mrs. Ennis?
I have nothing.
Wow. Well, I have a couple of things. All right, well, I wanted to thank Mr. Himmelberger, Mrs. Hackett, Mr. Donay for putting together that middle school walkthrough that we had asked for for months. And you were able to pull it together. And just a little disappointed in the crowds. I went down for crowd control, but really, we just had a nice time bonding, I think, is what we did. But thank you for putting that together because that was something that I wanted. Give the town the opportunity to actually see the building, which, you know, unfortunately, not too many people took part in. I also was at Bye Bye Birdie on Thursday night. And I wanted to thank Mr. Baggett and the students that participated. We had a great time. And that's all I have for tonight. We'll open the floor for comments. Oh, Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry. You just looked like you were all set. So, and plus, you took my time last week, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. No, my wife and I attended Bye Bye Birdie on Friday night. Again, another well-done performance by the staff, the students, everyone else. And I'd just like to thank the selectmen for listening to Mr. Himmelberger and myself Tuesday night. Hopefully, that we account for something. And I don't know, I understand that frustration on Saturday. Would it be feasible to try to do it again so we can continue to advise people this project? I know it's on TV, but maybe a weeknight or something versus a Saturday one more time? I don't know, Mr. Himmelberger, what do you think?
I'm not sold on that.
All right.
Go right ahead, Mr. Himmelberger. Your feelings?
I would be open to hosting whatever we could do, but certainly from what the committee would decide.
No, I just think based on the response that I saw. And this is a Saturday, which you figure you'd get better attendance on a Saturday than you would any weekday. And it was nine to eleven, so it gave a nice timeframe that people could come down and be part of the whole process. So I was just really kind of disappointed that we didn't get more people. I mean, if we're asking for two point five million dollars of their money, I really thought we'd see a few more people come down to look to see what we want to spend that money on. So I don't know if it's worth our time. I think the video that you have, that you put together for TV, I think that's great. We have been talking this up, and we have been talking about this now for quite some time. I think everything they want is available online, that they can go in and take a look at what the expenditures are. I mean, we have it all there for them. I don't know. If the committee would like to do another one, I won't be going to it, but...
I agree with you, but we did a couple at the high school. The thing is, you can rationalize, Saturday was a warm day, people had other things going on, but that's neither here nor there. I'm not one to let up, and I would still like to get something else somehow on. A lot of people that will be paying for this don't have internet also, okay? So it's not on our TV channel, is it? It is now? Okay, well, it is on the TV channel, we said now. Anyway, that's up to the board's discretion.
Mr. Himmelberger?
Mr. Matthew just whispered in my ear. I'm not sure if this is a possibility, but if we move the school committee meeting to the middle school on the twenty-fifth, would be...
Be able to tape it for TV. I don't know.
Well, we did the last time we did it. As long as we give them notice, we give Tony notice.
Well, you can move, yeah.
We can, he can do it on tape. It won't be a live broadcast, but it can be done on tape.
Right, he will run, tape it, and then broadcast.
And to Mrs. Ennis's point, she feels that we should send out invitations this time. You know, it's out there, and I'm fine with that if that's the way that the board wants to go. But you know what? Everybody knew when it was, we talked about it. I'm not, I'm not sold that that's going to be. But, you know, again, to Mr. Peterson's point, you know, I'll do whatever's necessary to get the word out there. And if, you know, the board really feels that that's the way to go, then I'll be part of it, even though I just said I wouldn't.
I think the selectmen said it best, it's our project, and if we don't sell it...
Well, see, that's half the problem right there, Mr. Peterson, okay? This is a public building that the selectmen should be supporting as well. So, you know, that's a great statement to make, that it's our plant, place to sell it. Well, it's not our place alone, okay? They're public officials, just like, these are their schools, okay, that we just happen to manage and run. You don't want to get me started on that. You really don't.
Keep going.
No. But I'm just saying, we are in this together. This is a town project.
I understand, I totally agree with you.
And I really think that it is just as much their responsibility as ours that this happens. Go ahead, Mr. Himmelberger.
Mrs. Ennis's point about invitations, we are, even though I can't do it from my office, certainly I think some of the PTOs and friends of might be able to send out the information. And certainly, any afternoon or, you know, whenever we can, we're open and available to help folks understand the project.
So, Mr. Peterson, since you're such a supporter of this idea, why don't you plan the walkthrough, the date? Well, I'm just, seriously, I just think it's, seriously, if you're there, if you really want to support this, that's great. And I will be there.
I don't have any problem with it, except the date, and I'll try to, as long as it's a date I have opened this particularly.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm saying, so you work with Mr. Himmelberger on a date, and we'll get a date together, and we'll see if we can get some invitations.
I don't disagree with you. The town project, we all boards should be supporting it. But I'm one to take the lead. I have no problem this time.
And I like you as the leader. So could you work with Mr. Peterson on that?
Yes.
And let me know?
Absolutely.
And I will certainly show my support at that meeting.
I know you did Saturday, thank you.